Welcome to, good morning and welcome to today's post-agenda for Thursday, August 31st, 2023, relative to Pittsburgh Water and Sewer Authority rate increases in water and sewer utilities. My name is Erica Strasburger. I'm happy to chair today's post-agenda hearing, and we are joined today by Councilmember Barb Warwick. I don't believe any other members have joined yet. And Councilwoman Deb Gross has also joined us as well, so welcome to our fellow council members. I'm happy to introduce our guests today from the Pittsburgh Water and Sewer Authority, Will Pickering, Chief Executive Officer, Edward Barca, Director of Finance, and Julie Meckling, Director of Customer Service. I'm happy to turn it over to our guests, without further ado, to get started on their presentation.
Excellent, thank you, Councilwoman Strasburger. As mentioned, I'm Will Pickering, I'm the Chief Executive Officer of the Pittsburgh Water and Sewer Authority, and June of this year marked my third year in this role. I joined PWSA in late 2016, and have really had the benefit of seeing our organization progress, and obviously, a lot of transformation that we have undergone since that time. I'm really proud of our team, I'm joined by two key team members here today. Our plan is just to walk through some of the core initiatives and our status, and then we'll get into some of the nuts and bolts of the current rate proposal that's before the Public Utility Commission. As a snapshot of who we are, I'm not going to walk through each of these stats, but what we call our customers are the number of accounts that we have, about 116,000. They're made up of combined accounts, where customers are getting our drinking water, our sewer conveyance, and our stormwater services. Customers who receive their drinking water from another drinking water utility, receive our stormwater and sewer services, and then we do have a small segment of our customer base that's relatively new within the last few years, that are stormwater only. So these are accounts that we have now, where they're paying an impervious-based fee for the stormwater elements of their property. So for example, a surface parking lot that wasn't receiving drinking water from us previously is now paying a stormwater fee, so that's a relatively new element of our customer base. We have a vast amount of infrastructure and assets that we are responsible for, pretty safe to say, most of it is old or very old. 1,200 miles of sewer lines and about 1,000 miles of drinking water lines. And then we have those other assets, and I do want to call out valves and fire hydrants, they're often forgotten, fire hydrants are only forgotten until there's an emergency. We are responsible for maintaining those within our drinking water service territory. And then the valves are very important, they're buried underground, and that's what allows us to isolate main breaks, do work on the system with putting the fewest number of customers out of service. So just taking a step back in who we are and the direction that we are headed, a few years ago, we underwent a strategic planning and mission, vision, and values process with our staff and including our Board of Directors, which I'm very pleased, Councilwoman Strasburger serves on our executive committee. And, you know, again, not going to walk through each of these, but the point here is that our mission and where we're really trying to focus as an organization is, we are critical to public health, and not just in the city of Pittsburgh, but the entire region relies on PWSA to provide safe and reliable drinking water, as well as take that used drinking water and get it to Alka-San for treatment. And we are also focused on future generations, and I think unfortunately, due to, I'm sure, very legitimate reasons, the organization lost its way in that respect. And what this team is trying to do with leadership from our board is to focus on that future generations, make sure we're making the investments, so that when we're all gone, we're leaving them with a water system that's going to be able to last another 100 years or so. As I mentioned, we're dealing with 100-year-old assets, and there's a lot of work that we need to catch up on, but we really believe we're the team to do that. And our vision for the future is really building that trust, which is one of the reasons I'm so excited to be here today, is, you know, we're looking for every opportunity to educate our customers on that mission and vision, and the projects and initiatives and services that we're able to provide them. I mentioned environmental compliance here, because, you know, in recent history and during my tenure at PWSA, you know, when I started, there really was a lack of focus and attention on environmental compliance, and when we use that term, you know, there's a lot of different ways to look at it, but regulatory compliance, so making sure that our drinking water meets or exceeds all standards, and making sure that we file all of our reports, and that we comply with our consent order and agreements. So these are, and we'll get into them in the future slides, but we are in legal agreements with both federal, state, and county governments to execute on certain projects and to create certain programs. An environmental compliance program is a core initiative, it's one that we talked to our board about quite a bit, and we've seen some awesome evolution there. So environmental compliance, you know, it's related to our core values, and it is, our focus on that has really enabled us to get beyond some of the past missteps. We did have a settlement with the Attorney General's Office, I'll say, we were able to completely resolve early this year, that we're really proud to put that behind us, that was a settlement that was related to lead service line replacement and lead exceedance. So we're moving beyond and retiring some of these environmental compliance obligations, but there's still more work to do there. We are, and it's one of the reasons why Julie's joined us, you know, we're very focused on customer assistance. We recognize we've asked a lot more of our customers in the last few years than we traditionally have in the past, and in recognition of that, we need to offer programs for customers that need assistance, whether it's one-time or on an ongoing basis, if they find that the charges that we have or the bills are unaffordable. And I am very proud of what we have developed to date, that's here on this slide. We have a monthly bill discount program, we have payment plans that can offer what we call a re-ridge forgiveness, and that's really forgiving some of that past due debt as you maintain that current bill history. We have a winter shut-off moratorium that has been in place for several years now, and I do want to credit Councilwoman Gross, her time on our board was really instrumental in making sure that even prior to PUC regulation, that we had that winter moratorium in place. And then we do have a lot of programs in place for those who are interested in having their lead service line replaced, so if anyone believes that they have a lead service line, we have an option for you, in addition to our commitment to eventually getting to all lead service lines in our system by 2026. The final bullet there is our CARES team, and it's a team within Julie's department that is specifically dedicated to working through these issues and connecting our customers with the programs that we have in place, that again, I'll say, really match up with anything that I have seen across the country. We spend a lot of time benchmarking ourselves, and this is an area that we will continue to refine and improve upon, but, and even as part of our rate cases, we're proposing to expand it, but I think it's, we're doing some very good things here. And just to back up everything I've said, we included some stats here. We have over 6,700 customers enrolled in that monthly discount program. There is a tiered level of discount for those who are very low income to receive even more, and we have over 1,500 customers there. We offer one-time cash grants, that's the hardship grants program, and that number is actually a little bit lower, because at the very bottom of that table, we have been very successful in putting our customers in touch with LIHOP funding, which was actually an outgrowth of the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act. So that funding, we've been able to put our customers in touch with $1.7 million during its existence, and that has necessitated, not necessitated as many of those hardship grants as maybe we would have seen. And then you can see we're giving out that bill forgiveness, the re-ridge forgiveness at a decent clip as well this year, that's a relatively new program. So, you know, with all of that in place, I will say, it is very difficult, though it doesn't stop me from asking my colleague Ed probably about every month or so, how do we stack up against other drinking water utilities? In this slide here, it is very difficult to do apples to apples. So we decided to do the drinking water rate, each municipality and different utilities bill for different things. So before anyone jumps out of their seat, recognize, these are just water charges. PWSA bills, as I mentioned, include a stormwater fee, and then we have a sewer conveyance charge, or a volumetric sewer conveyance rate, and we bill for Alka-San. So that's why the top, the bottom dollar total amount is different than these numbers. But if you look at our regional peers, as well as investor-owned utilities such as Pennsylvania American and Aqua American, our current rates are pretty close. And this is something that we're constantly monitoring. I also, you know, we're offering different programs and are at different stages of our capital planning. So for instance, to my knowledge, Aqua and Pennsylvania American are not doing close to as much lead service line replacement as PWSA has done and is committed to do over the next few years. So, you know, where do those dollars go, is really where we're going to take a turn here and focus in on. I will say, at the outset, we look for every opportunity to offset the investments that we need to make with external sources of funding. So when I'm saying that, I'm saying grant opportunities. Ed's team has been superb in getting us low-interest loans and grants from the state and federal government, we'll get into some of that. As a municipal publicly-owned utility, those are opportunities that we have that investor-owned utilities traditionally do not have access to. And the bipartisan infrastructure law provides us with an opportunity, maybe the last time in our generation, and we want to take advantage of those dollars that are available to PWSA for the benefit of our customers, because those are dollars that we're not going to have to ask in the rates that we charge our customers. So this next pie graph is really, you know, our operating budget. So on the right-hand side, we were listing out the different buckets. As you can see, a large amount of our operating budget is actually that passed through from Alka-San. So we bill on behalf of, on behalf of them, and then we provide payment for the entire city, for those customers, regardless of our ability to collect. So that's an arrangement that's been in place, I think, you know, pretty much since PWSA's existence, and that explains that yellow piece of the bar. But I think the light blue is one that's very important, it's debt service. As we're going to get into, we have a lot of capital improvements, and those capital improvements are financed traditionally through municipal bonds, and we have to pay the debt service on those bonds, and that's our existing debt service payment in 2023. As you can see, there's a large amount directed to that, just because of the nature of the work that we're doing, and some of it due to decisions that were made well before any of the employees that are currently leading PWSA were there. We like this slide, because I think it really tells the story of where we were, which you look in the 2013 period of time, the organization, from what we have been told and observed through the data, is that they were spending just enough money on capital. So these are the water mains, the sewer mains, pieces of infrastructure or treatment plant, they were fixing what was broken. And, and that was in maybe a good scenario, they were able to fix what was broken. And as you can see, as time elapsed, the transition went to a more proactive capital improvement plan, identifying, you know, what we needed to do to get the infrastructure stable. And that is, in the 2018 time period, that was actually the Board of Directors, prior to PUC regulation, implemented a large rate increase for us to be able to begin replacing lead service lines and develop a proactive capital improvement plan, including things like water main and sewer main replacements. Now, the dollar amounts have continued and will continue into the future, largely due to the consent order and agreement projects that we have in place, something we're calling the Water Reliability Plan, that we're going to be getting into. But those in some, about half a billion dollars' worth of construction projects, that's our estimate, so this need for capital spending unfortunately is not going away, but again, will give us that drinking water system that's going to present the new generation of PWSA customers with a water system they can rely on. So just a quick few examples to, you know, provide some real-life examples. When we talk about capital improvement, what are we talking about here? And that photo is actually one taken recently in Councilwoman Gross's district there. We are doing a large diameter water main project that's going to allow the Highland 1 and Highland 2 reservoir systems to be able to flow off of one another, providing resiliency and redundancy. So that is actually a large diameter drinking water pipe that is being installed and lowered into the ground in Highland Park. Last year, we were able to replace nine miles of water main, and that again, represents our focus on getting those older pieces of infrastructure out of the system. We prioritize mains based on their history of breaks. If they have lead service lines, we want to get to those first. And we weigh in economic justice information, so that we're able to prioritize some of those communities that have traditionally been forgotten. We get into, I won't walk through all of those details, but I do have to call out our sewer infrastructure, which is often forgotten, because it's buried even deeper than the drinking water infrastructure. And we are, you know, at nine miles of sewer rehab last year, that's sometimes what we call point repairs, a sort of spot repairs of the sewer, or a lining technology that can add an additional 50 years or so of life to that sewer without having to excavate and do costly replacements. So here, it may be a little bit difficult to see the numbers, but the message we're trying to get across here is those water reliability projects and core elements of our capital plan are really nearly 70% of what we have planned. The drinking water reliability plan here, as I mentioned, is budgeted over the next five years at nearly half a billion dollars. Small diameter water main replacement program is also a very high-dollar amount. Lead service line replacement, if we are to continue toward our goal of replacing all lead service lines by 2026, we need to make those levels of investment. And then you kind of see some smaller areas of essential infrastructure. So, you know, there are other things that we do that are not listed on here, that we know we want to do more of and have to do more of. There are investments at the drinking water treatment plant, there are stormwater management projects using green infrastructure and other techniques, as well as a forthcoming consent decree that we expect with US DOJ and EPA related to our wet weather plan. So Alka-San has their CSO Combined Sewer Overflow Plan. We do think that we're going to have a consent decree in place related to PWSA city-specific combined sewer overflows. So huge dollars that we're having to find a way to fund these programs and these commitments. Lead service line replacement, I've talked about it quite a bit, but, you know, we did surpass 10,000 lead service lines replaced, we're keeping our foot on the gas pedal there, and, you know, we think we're over the hump and have replaced half of what is in our inventory. Sort of the definition of what is considered unknown or a non-led site continues to evolve due to regulation from the state, but we know that we have made tremendous progress, and again, very few cities can say that they've done the kind of work that we have with lead service line replacement. Arguably as important, or maybe more importantly, we have improved our drinking water treatment. Since 2020, we have been well within compliance, so if anyone does still have a lead service line replacement or lead in their plumbing, we provide the treatment at the drinking water treatment plan to reduce that exposure to lead. And our last round, really, we saw the lowest levels of lead tested at homes that are verified to have lead, so we're going after those worst-case scenario homes. We're seeing the lowest levels that we've seen in the last few decades. So we have done a tremendous job on treatment and replacement, so that we can get this issue resolved in the near future. As we went through, those lead service line replacements are very expensive, so we do everything we can to take advantage of funding opportunities, and I do want to use this venue as an opportunity to express, on behalf of PWSA and our customers, our gratitude for receiving $17 million in ARPA funding for this. These dollars are taking form right now in neighborhoods across the city. We are putting, we're going to put each of those dollars and cents to use, and I think in a few months, we'll be able to report back that the majority of those funds have been obligated under our neighborhood-based lead service line replacement programs. We do look for opportunities outside of obviously coming to the city and asking for funding, which I think was a unique opportunity. Ed and his team are talking to the state who manage the EPA grants, and we are knocking at their door on a quarterly basis, trying to get as much as we can for this project, because there is a lot of money particularly earmarked for lead service line replacement in the country right now. Again, those dollars are primarily only available to municipal utilities like PWSA, so our existing program being in place, really, any dollar that we get, we can assign it to a contract and get the work done, and our position as a publicly-owned authority allows us to be able to tap those fundings, and those are grant dollars, so those are dollars that we don't have to include in our rate proposals. Water Reliability Plan, I mentioned this, this is a series of projects aimed at eliminating what we call a single point of failure in our system. There is an element of our treatment process at the treatment plant that is over 100 years old, and if it were to fail, we would not have the ability to produce water. And obviously, that should have been a priority a while ago, it is a priority now. We are under an agreement with strict schedules with the Department of Environmental Protection to complete a series of projects that will allow us to replace that single point of failure. You may have observed, and I know Councilwoman Gross certainly did, our work at the Highland 2 reservoir in Highland Park, that is the fenced-off covered reservoir there, we replaced the liner and cover, and that's what this is, a photo is actually the liner that kind of beds that, if you think of this as an enormous swimming pool, that is the swimming pool liner there that that gentleman is finishing to install. We completed that project late last year, and now we are working on, we did rehab one, and we're working on another large diameter main that actually feeds that reservoir. We want to make sure that those are in good shape, because that Highland 2 reservoir is going to serve as our clearwell, which is the final disinfection step in our drinking water treatment process, and that will allow us to replace the clearwell, which is that single point of failure at the treatment plant. And I know Ed skipped the slide, it's fine, you don't need to go back, but another point of that is that we are, you know, given the dollar amount, we're using low-interest loans from EPA and PennVest to fund that work. And I think Ed is going to get into sort of the interest rate difference and the savings that we're seeing on behalf of customers there. So I may have gone into too much detail of everything that we have going on, but these are the challenges and opportunities that the PWSA leadership team and our whole staff are trying to address, and as I hope was evident, it takes resources, and while we're very sensitive and never want to ask more of our customers, we do need additional revenue to pay the debt service to advance our capital program. What we do is we gather internally and pull together a proposal, we take into consideration everything that we can do to lower that amount, and at the same time, take a really hard look at what we can do to assist customers, and we put that forward through a regulatory process that we can go ahead to the next slide, Ed, and kind of walk through. So as a reminder, in 2018, the state passed a law placing PWSA under Pennsylvania Public Utility Commission jurisdiction. And so what that means is, in order for us to raise rates, we follow the same process as private or investor-owned utilities. We put forward that proposal, and the sort of the dollar icon is that process I mentioned earlier of executive management getting together, finding out the resources that we need, we bring that package to the board. The board no longer determines the rates, that ultimate negotiation and decision rests with the Pennsylvania Public Utility Commission. So the board blesses the proposal that we then put forward to the Public Utility Commission for their consideration. There is a public process that plays out through the PUC, they have held, and I think all-in will hold a total of six public input hearings, and then the process also allows for intervenors, and so members of the public, property owners, any other interested stakeholders can officially intervene. It's a legal process, it's a lot different than when I joined the authority, where rates could be set at a board meeting in December and effective in a few weeks. This is a nine-month process, it's pretty administratively burdensome, and admittedly costly, which is one of the reasons why we were trying to, we're trying to get a three-year rate increase, so we don't have to go through this multiple times. So that is just an overview of kind of the different players involved in the rate case process, and this is now our fourth rate proposal that we have brought before the PUC, so we're getting a little bit better each time. And we're really, where we stand now is kind of, we're in that middle stage where we are responding to questions from the interveners. The Public Utility Commission is legally obligated to make a decision on our rate case in February, I think Valentine's Day. All right, with that, I'll turn it over to Ed.
Great, thank you, Will. The next few slides, we'll dig into some of the details specific to the rate case that's ongoing between the Pittsburgh Water and Sewer Authority and the PUC. Just to recap, you know, anytime the PWSA, or really any regulated utility submits a rate proposal to the PUC, it follows the same legal process each time. So all attributes of each rate case may be different, depending on utilities and their needs, the actual process itself that's followed is the same. As Will outlined, that process is typically a nine-month process, unless there's a settlement that could be reached prior to that. And you could think of that nine-month process in really in three parts, very condensed, but in three parts. Part one is the rate filing, the data request from the PUC to really investigate or start to investigate what is being requested, and then public input. Part two of that process is a more in-depth PUC investigation and public hearings related to what's being asked, the entity that, you know, that is asking for those additional funds, really trying to get a better understanding of why those funds are needed, to really then make a recommendation to the utility and also to the commission through that process. And part three of that process, the last part, is the recommended decision and rate approval. So really, just, you know, part three just kind of brings together part one and two, all the investigative work to come to some decision on what is and is not required or necessary as part of these rate increases. What I've done on this slide here is, next to each part, I put in the dates that are applicable to PWSA's current rate filing. So right now, we are in part two, as the slide shows there, of that investigative work and hearings at the PUC level. Well touched on it, but just to reiterate, rates are set by the PUC and not by the PWSA board. And the last thing I want to mention on this slide is that regulated entities never receive the full amount that they request from the commission. Typically, you know, just an average of all regulated utilities, they are awarded anywhere between 50 to 60% of what they request. Historically, PWSA has fair, you know, on the higher end of that, as you could see there on the right of the slide, at about 60% of what we request has been awarded. The specifics of the rate increase itself, we did ask for a multi-year, three-year rate increase, year one being 2024, we're asking for $46.8 million in additional revenue, year two, year 2025, at $45.4 million, and then the last year, fiscal year 2026, at $53.9 million. These multi-year rate increases are common with our peers. If you refer to Alka-San, they are currently in the middle of their multi-year phase to increase rates, which started in 2022, and I believe goes to 2026, and within that, they are going to raise rates 7% per year through that timeframe that I just mentioned. Nationally, it's also a common practice, if you look at DC Water and other large peer utilities that are comparable to PWSA. The reason these multi-year requests are, you know, are requested and why they're relevant to PWSA is it brings revenue stability to the authority, so when you talk about these large infrastructure projects that span multiple years, knowing what revenue will be coming in the door through those years helps to fund those improvements, but also plan for additional improvements through that timeframe, as obligations are due with regulated utilities and other players. And also customer transparency, knowing what rates will be, you know, projecting out into the future, gives our customers an understanding of the impacts that they may see on their bill, and so being able to publicly display that allows our, you know, our customers and our rate pairs to properly plan, to know what's coming in the future. The main drivers of this rate case, there are a lot of them, but I really highlighted four here that are the biggest drivers, is inflation, you know, all, you know, whether it's your, you know, your personal life, or all businesses are experiencing inflation to some degree, and it's no different at the authority, when you talk about materials and construction costs, to fund the necessary improvements that are required. Debt service, well outlined, our large capital improvement plan, one byproduct of that is debt service, whether that's low-interest loans through the state or public municipal bonds, in order to keep those, that program moving forward as we plan. Regulatory compliance, to make sure we meet all applicable state and federal compliance obligations. And then last is just, again, just infrastructure improvements, and that could be day-to-day improvements, breaks that aren't really capital in nature, really just those day-to-day operations that continue to, you know, pull the authority forward. This next slide here, maybe a little This next slide here may be a little hard to read, but I did want to highlight it because it shows some very important information. The top half of this slide shows the typical customer's bill if the rate increase that PWSA is requesting is approved in full. As you can see, it starts out at about $86.43 per month, which is the current rate, and that amount climbs to $146.12 through 2026, again, if approved at the full amount as requested. But I don't want to, you know, lose sight of that. We also have underneath that our cap customers and what their impacts would be over that three-year period. As you can see, there is an impact, but we do take pride in the programs that we offer. But also, as we go through this process, we try to limit the impacts as much as possible for those vulnerable folks, just knowing their situation and just trying to, you know, work with our customers as much as we can through this process. The last few slides I want to key on, just to transition a little bit, is to talk about the financial stability of the authority. As Will said, back in 2016, 2017, you know, maybe there were just some decisions at that time that, you know, predated the management team here at the authority. But I can tell you, since 2018, we take pride in serving our customers at a very high level to make sure we meet their needs, but also to make sure we have that financial backing at the authority to continue to move forward important projects, initiatives that really better serve our rate payers. And with that, you know, the heartbeat of the organization is our five-year capital improvement plan. We have ramped that up really since 2018, and we will continue to do so really at the benefit of our rate payers to make sure we could serve them through lead remediation or other efforts to provide safe and clean and reliable drinking water. We have a mixed funding approach for that plan. That includes grants through the infrastructure improvement, or the Infrastructure Act that was passed at the federal level. We also work with our state revolving fund and other entities, you know, opportunities through the EPA to make sure we can keep costs as low as possible. You know, and it's not just PWSA saying that, you know, we're going to, you know, focus on our finances and really move the authority forward. Just recently, we were upgraded by S&amp;P Global Ratings to an A-plus rating that really shows these improvements that we're making are real and are happening, both at a financial level, but also at an organizational level, when you talk about staffing and other needs that really help move and pull the authority forward. And we also just earlier this spring, received a credit rating outlook upgrade from Moody's to positive. So while not a rating upgrade, it is a rating outlook that dictates in the future, if we keep doing what we're doing at the authority, we can expect a rate increase to, again, really solidify everything we've talked about today. And the last slide I want to point out is really just, you know, we talked about external funding in our capital improvement plan, but, you know, let's put some numbers to that. Really, what does that mean? Since 2018, the authority has obtained over $679 million in external funding. You could see there on the slide, the various sources, whether it's through Alka-San's Grow Program, the city of Pittsburgh through the ARPA funds, foundations, PennVest, the PADEP. Really, what we're doing at the authority is casting a wide net to make sure we can get as low cost financing as possible to really limit that burden on our rate payers. As part of that $679 million, about 64 million of that was, you know, were grants, and we anticipate that that, you know, that level of grants will continue to expedite through the opportunities that are available in today's market. And really, just to summarize what all this means as far as obtaining this money, you know, pulling the grants aside for a second, if you look at the loans we've achieved or, you know, we're awarded through this 679 million, the average interest rate was 1.27%. That equates to savings of $540 million to our rate payers over a 30-year period. So that's not something that we're going to realize in year one. However, as we continue to achieve and obtain these opportunities and these financing awards, our rate payers will continue to see that benefit, not just in the current year, but for the next 30, 40, 50 years, to keep rates as low as possible. And with that, Will, turn it back over to you. Any closing remarks?
No, I think you covered it. Thanks, Ed.
Thank you very much. I am happy to turn it over to questions from members, and I'll start with Councilwoman Warwick, who's joining us here in chambers.
Great, thank you. Thanks for being here. Yeah, so, you know, I did a little bit of digging around before I got here. So yeah, so I do have some questions. Just to kind of start off, I do, I did get a really helpful presentation from Annie Quinn at the Mon Water Project. I think she's actually here in the audience. Hey, Annie. Which, really, a fantastic layout of what PWSA does, drink, you know, all these differences. I recommend you check out this presentation. It's very comprehensive and clear, and she's been great about kind of showing it to community groups and such to kind of help folks understand a little bit more what this request for rate increase is about. At any rate, so, again, just from this and also from your, you know, it lines up. So the average PWSA household pays about, the average household pays about $86 a month. The Alka-San bill, which is bundled in with that, is about $38 a month. So at any rate, for the PWSA part, that is 68% drinking water, 23% wastewater, and about 9% stormwater for a grant, for a total average, a total bill. And at the end of the day, right, that's what matters to customers is the total. I mean, I understand that there's Alka-San and PWSA combined, but the total bill of $124.95 a month. So with these proposed rate increases, that would mean that that average, and again, my understanding is these are, the numbers from PWSA, right? Like, the average, the total would go up to about $144, $145 a month in 2024, $167 a month in 2025, and $193 a month in 2026. Does that sort of sound?
I don't know what those numbers are from, Ed.
I think, I think they sort of line up with what you have.
Yeah, I don't know if they're in front of me, but yeah, if you assume the Alka-San component, yes, they're generally aligned.
So I'm talking about total bill. So I did some Googling, and again, let me say, everything I'm throwing out here is just like me Googling stuff, okay? So if there's things that are wrong, please, the public, send me emails, let me know, you know, whatever. But so the U.S. EPA says that the average American family of four uses 400 gallons of water per day, which is about 12,000 gallons a month. That is what I found on Google. I checked that at a few different sources. So, you know, with that in mind, so, and PWSA charges about $30 for the first thousand gallons, and then about just under $15 for every full thousand gallons after that, which for the average family of four would shake out to $190 a month. So that's actually more than double the average. So I'm talking about a family of four. And the reason I want to focus on that particular group, right, like the family of four, because we can talk about the average, right? But the average includes, you know, individuals, whatever, but so I kind of want to focus on this family of four, because when we talk about utility bills and all these bills, right, whether it's groceries and rent, and, you know, it's, and especially with utilities, things like utilities and groceries that, you know, expand with the number of people in the house, when you are talking about the family of four, that's where I think the, you're feeling the impact the most, right? And certainly, if you're talking, you know, I mean, you know, there are those of us with higher incomes that, you know, we can swing it, but this is, so at any rate. So essentially, with the proposed 96% rate hike, you know, for a family of four, we're really, you know, getting up to, you know, with Alka-San, you know, we're getting up to about $320 a month, which is about $3,800, you know, a little more than $3,800 a year. And, you know, the median household income in Pittsburgh is $54,306. So for a family of four, and again, these count, please, like, anybody who's listening, correct my, but I tried to be careful about this. So for a family of four, the water bill would be about 7% of your income, right? That would be just your, I should, let me, the PWSA bill, right, the one bill. And I get that there's Alka-San, PWSA, and it's all separate, and for you guys, that is, you know, an important thing to note, but for the average person, doesn't really matter, right? But, you know, again, a quick Google search says that really, you know, on like Nerd Wallet or whatever, says that your utility costs should be, you know, really at the max 10% of your total income for utilities. So Pittsburghers are very close to that just on water, a family of four, right? A family of four is very close to that just on water. And also, the average Duquesne Light bill, and again, these are averages, so I don't even know what a family, I mean, I didn't go into these numbers on Duquesne or Peoples, you know, but, you know, so the average Duquesne Light bill is 123 a month, and the average gas bill is like 153 a month, again, Google searches. So this is getting to be an awful lot of money for utilities. So I do want to underscore those numbers here, because, you know, I recognize that PWSA has lots of things to pay for, and y'all are doing good work in the city, but this is where, this is where people are, you know, are feeling it, right? And they already are paying quite a bit for their utilities, so I want that to sort of sink in. At any rate, so I just wanted to state that first, and then now kind of get in, get into the questions. So I was on the website this morning, and I didn't see anything about the rate increase proposal on the homepage. I did find it in the press release section. So I wanted to ask, how was this communicated to customers?
Julie's probably, yeah, Julie knows the details.
Good morning. First, I want to address the usage portion, if you don't mind. So you're right, your thought, your train of thought is correct. Regionally, however, the usage is much lower than what you had Googled there. So on average, we see 1,000 gallons or less usage for minors, and then 1,000 to 2,000 gallons for adults. So depending upon the makeup of the household, you're looking at average consumption for a family of four to be at 5,000 gallons or less. So just to level set that. And then you can read the numbers based on that. But to answer your question about advertising the rate proposal, part of the commission's regulations is requiring us to have a message on the outside of the bill, and then also a separate insert on a colorful page that alerts customers to the fact that they can do a number of things to participate in the rate case, so they can be part of the public input hearings, which we had six this time, and then also they can intervene in the case by actually filing a formal complaint with the commission to become part of the process.
I would, sorry, if you don't want to, I would add, we also issued press releases, promoted it on social media, recognizing not everyone gets a bill, or everyone tells us, they toss the bill in the trash. So, you know, I personally did several media engagements around the time of the hearings, and then we did place an ad in the Post Gazette, which is, you know, sort of a legal requirement, but that is also part of the requirement.
Okay, so, and also this letter, I know, because I was alerted from some constituents, this letter, did everybody get this letter?
That's, I looked, that looks to be the one that I think is printed on blue paper that ends up in the bills.
Yeah, this is, yeah, this is a lot of, a lot, it's a lot of letter. It's very long.
And those are PUC requirements, and the language unfortunately is, so we did create a webpage to try to distill some of that into more salient.
So there was more, so people got more than just this letter, like, to their house, or?
We actually did two rounds of mailing. So we had the first month, when the filing came out in May, that had a bill insert, and then we had a second round with a message on the envelope and another insert. So customers got that information twice with their monthly bills.
And I believe the webpage is referenced in the letter for more information, it's a little more digestible than that legalese letter.
Yeah, so, I mean, I don't, now, this maybe might have been my, you know, but I didn't actually get a communication, I didn't see a communication, at least maybe, now, maybe I missed something. And, you know, I know that there are a number of others who are pretty deep into PWSA and water-related things that didn't know, you know what I mean, that were sort of surprised by these hearings. But at any rate, I, you know, I understand that it's very hard to communicate things and make sure that people are hearing about them. But at any rate, so my next question, just about the hearings. So how many, how many people showed up to testify at the hearings, like, how many letters and such?
Sure, the first round of hearings were four, and there were 33 individuals who testified. We also had media present at the event, and all the major television stations in the area picked up the news prior to and during the hearings. And then this last round, we had an additional 11.
Okay, so about 44 total?
Correct.
Okay. And what, what did they, what'd they say, what'd they have to say?
So largely expressing opposition for the increase. I mean, the numbers are, you know, pretty stark because we have to go out to ask for what we need to improve the infrastructure. And like Ed mentioned, you know, you're not looking at getting what you're asking for, you're looking at, you know, a slice and dice by the commission and all the advocates. So you're looking at 60% on average. The other complaints, I was excited to hear that they were far fewer service-related complaints than in prior years. So I only have to provide rebuttal testimony with respect to, you know, a handful of those, much less, you know, this is going on at my property, or, you know, much less service-related individual complaints. It was more a broad affordability concern.
Another thing I had a question about, so in East End Print, Ann Belsa reported that the board approved the request unanimously without discussion. So this is a pretty big ask. So, I mean, can we get some insight into presumably the internal discussions that went on prior to making this decision?
Sure, happy to do so, and I could invite a board member to chime in if I get anything inaccurately. As I mentioned, our team, as well as the rate consultants and outside counsel that we use, developed the proposal. The, you know, we came to agreement at the staff level, and then PWSA has a finance committee within its board, where we walk them through the proposal and our strategy for the rate case. And then we held an education session where every member of the board was able to hear our reasoning for this particular rate proposal. So while it may not have been publicly debated in detail at the meeting, there were several opportunities, and the board did take advantage of those to get into the details on the request
And then I guess, and I don't know if you all will have answers for this, but so how much, so how much does a resident, residential customer pay? And we can, and we can just talk about drinking water, I guess, you know, how much does a residential customer pay per gallon? Is that something?
Not easily answered, because as you alluded to, the first thousand right now is currently billed differently than the subsequent thousands, but Julie, I don't know if you want to hazard a guess, maybe we can get back to you.
I mean, if it's too, I could also phrase it differently. So compare, so does a residential customer and a business customer pay the same?
No.
And what is the difference there?
It depends on the size of their meter connection and the type of facility that is the non-residential facility. So we don't have that table with us, but it does get, each category within the non-residential is billed at a different volumetric rate, and then sort of the larger meter connection you have, there are different fixed fees and different rates that are built into that first thousand gallons.
So.
I was just going to mention too with that, I mean, there's the different meters.
I was just going to mention too with that, I mean, there's the different meter size, but part of our cost of service, which is developed for the rate case and fully vetted by the PUC, is looking at those, those charges for each customer class, whether that's commercial, industrial, residential. And part of that cost of service study is to look to see what impact those customer classes have on our system, to then recover those costs from those classes appropriately. So while it may be a lower rate, you're also talking a higher volume of usage, and part of that cost of service is to figure that out, again, which is also approved by the PUC.
And I would add, it's a pretty standard industry practice to, you know, to consider the volume a particular customer may be using, because of, you know, using it as a, at a single-family home is clearly not the same as a hospital.
Right, so that, that's a good, I'm glad, I'm glad you brought up a hospital. So I guess, so I understand, like, so if, if you're, if you're, if you're using more water, you're paying less per gallon, presumably?
On a volume basis.
On a volume basis, right, which, you know, I understand generally that's sort of standard practice, but, but, you know, in this situation, when, when people are so squeezed these days on, 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 on everything, I, I would think that it would, it would be interesting to explore options where, you know, in fact, because, you know, if you consider like a neighborhood, or, you know, I mean, that UPMC would pay less per gallon, you know, than someone, you know, just a average worker in Pittsburgh paying their water bill, that doesn't really seem fair to me. Even if they're using a lot more water, great, let them pay a lot more in water bills, you know? And I would even go so far as to say, you know, you, you do have these, these programs for, for lower-income folks, which is super. So, so there clearly is a capacity to adjust the cost, you know, adjust bills depending on how much, you know, on a person's income. So with that in mind, I'd be interested to know if there were ways to adjust bills so that, you know, you know, for example, in, in, oh, yeah, you know, in my house, I, I don't know, we, I don't, I don't know what our total household income is, maybe somewhere in the ballpark of two hundred thousand, right? So we, we can, we can handle this, right? Like, in my house, we can handle this. We could probably even handle a little more, right? So it would, it would be interesting for PWSA to explore, you know, a sliding scale fee for utilities. And I think that those types of, of programs can really help your sort of, you know, that, that group of folks in the middle that really is hurting so much right now, right? I mean, the, the, the person who called me, really, it was about this letter, right? The, the, the first constituent I heard from, again, a family of four, living in Squirrel Hill, I can't remember what she said her husband does, but she works in a school cafeteria, and maybe her husband does some kind of construction, I mean, you know, every, every dollar, like every month, the, these are the family, so some kind of sliding scale sort of going, and I know it's more complicated on the billing side, but I think that that would be a worthwhile At any rate, yeah, so, and also then, I wanted to ask a little bit about the, just the, the financial relief. So you said you've got about sixty-seven hundred customers enrolled in the bill discount program, and would you say a hundred and sixteen thousand total customers?
Yeah, that includes our sewer-only and the stormwater-only customers, so not everyone's, yeah, drinking water combined.
Right, right, okay, well, at any rate, with that, right, so, you know, that's about maybe five, so was, what percent of your, of your customers do you think are, are, are on this bill discount? Like five percent, seven percent?
Well.
Of your total, of your total.
The program is limited to residential customers, so our residential customer base, I believe, is seventy-one thousand accounts, thereabouts, looking to my colleagues.
I'd say more like eighty, yeah.
Eighty, eighty thousand accounts, so within, you know, we have done affordability analysis to try to see, you know, based on the existing program right now, is set at one hundred and fifty percent of federal poverty level.
Right.
Which is a sliding scale, depending on the, the number of individuals within the home. We are, and I failed to mention in our, in our slides, is that we are proposing as part of this package to expand eligibility to two hundred percent of the federal poverty level. To get to the point you made earlier, you know, this is, these are problems that our families are dealing with as well, and we're very cognizant of our own employees with costs going up, so we want to, wanted to expand the eligibility. It is difficult to do a precise eligibility analysis, because we know so many within the city of Pittsburgh are renters or live in a multifamily building where they're not getting a PWSA bill. We have some programs in place to, to work around that, and work with landlords who may have tenants that are eligible, but in those multifamily buildings, I think we're, we're still, as an industry, trying to figure out how do those end-users get the discount. But the, the last affordability analysis, I think, was 2020?
Twenty nineteen.
Twenty nineteen, and, and we believed within the city that there were
Twenty thousand.
Twenty thousand households that were probably technically eligible to receive, you know, at, that below a hundred and fifty percent of the federal poverty level. We're looking to renew that, and, and our expectation and hope is that PUC accepts us to increase the eligibility level to two hundred percent, and that would, you know, on all likelihood, you know, increase that number of eligibility within the homes here in the city.
Okay. Yeah, so just with the, so, so right now, about eight, eight percent of the customers are, are getting, but, but actually, in Pittsburgh, it's roughly about twenty percent, I think, is it one in five Pittsburghers live in poverty, I think, is the number that I pulled up, is that correct? Yeah. So, you know, we're not getting everybody, by any means.
Absolutely not.
Right, so, yeah, so in addition to expanding the, which is, is, you know, commendable, that's good, like to, to widen the pool, how, how does the outreach work?
I can take that.
Okay.
So we have an internal PGH to a CARES team that actively, each day, makes cold calls to customers, does neighborhood canvassing, interacts with about twenty to thirty community groups around the city of Pittsburgh, to be at their events, to enroll people on the spot. And then we also are looking to get a more refined GIS mapping, we have a working group internally, to make certain that we're targeting those areas of environmental justice and confirm low income through the census tract data. And we have a quarterly meeting of the Low Income Assistance Advisory Committee, on which I encourage anyone to contact me to join as a member, but we also have a very proactive look at how can we do better? How can we, you know, reach more people, enroll more people at every opportunity? If we have a stormwater event, the Public Affairs organizes, we have the CARES team there to make certain we're meeting the low-income people at every possible turn. So, you know, we're open to ideas and suggestions of how to get the word out more, but they're actively increasing that enrollment. I mean, we were given the goal of six thousand enrollees by the end of 2022 by Will, and we accomplished that, and we're, you know, even above and beyond halfway through this year, so very committed to continuing to increase enrollment.
And in one of the groups Julie is going to be participating in, is with, you know, other utilities statewide, to determine how we can create a universal assistance, at least, application process. If you have that universal application, whether you're going for LIHEAP on electric and gas assistance, they check a box, and then they're eligible for our programs as well. We've been working with Duquesne Light to cross-enroll, so if they have a customer that's enrolled in assistance programs and they live within our service territory, they send that contact information over to Julie's team in CARES. So we're trying to, you know, not only just encourage enrollment, we're able to enroll people on the spot when we attend public events, but then also to be able to, to pull from the other utilities and lower that entry of barriers so that we can get enrollment up.
Okay, I mean, another thing to look at would be, of course, SNAP membership, right? If you have a SNAP card, you're enrolled.
Right, so in the Low Income Household Water Assistance Program that Will mentioned was so profitable, a hundred, you know, one point seven million grants since January of last year, we're working with DHS to obtain those grantees' enrollment information. So we've signed an agreement to have that data be shared with us, so that we can also proactively reach out to those customers in case they're on campus for some other reason for the food stamps, and they also can be part of our programs.
Okay, great. Okay, just in terms of, of sort of looking at, so, and, and I, I need to ask this question because it comes up so much, is this, this issue, you know, I know that you have lots of things that you're paying for, but this issue of the private sewer line situation. I know in, in Squirrel Hill on Forbes, you guys did make a huge investment to build, to put in a line, right, to, that businesses could access as an alternative to their private line. Is that, so we've seen this on the East End, I know in Regent Square in my district, there's streets that are starting to crumble, and I'm just, you know, hoping that I'm not going to have a gaping pit in the middle of my street due to, you know, not my street, but a street in my district, so can you speak to that? Is there any plan around that? Because I know that is something the public definitely doesn't understand, like this whole, what's, you know, they think it's the sewers, right? This is the city, right? PWSA, so I don't know, is there any plan around that?
It's certainly something that we're looking at, we have an internal group, I mean, often we find so many of these are case-by-case, so it's, it's difficult to, you know, if we were to universally say, accept all of it, we would be asking for a much larger dollar amount in our capital improvement plan and maintenance budgets to maintain those sewers. But we, we completely get your, your point, that the public's expectation and understanding of these issues is much different than what we have in our maps that determines, you know, our responsibility or the private property owner. So it has come up in a number of different ways, and I know Julie is also, you know, hears from customers through complaints to the PUC about this issue, so we're, we're trying to, to work to develop a, some way to provide support and assistance for these customers.
Okay.
And, you know, not every instance necessarily lends itself to the one like Forbes Avenue, but, you know, that is an option when there is not, you know, a, a public sewer that is accessible
Right.
for some of these properties.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, and, and certainly in that, I would, I would like to see, even if it means liens and whatnot, I would like to see things, fewer gaping holes in the street for months and months and months, and, you know, things getting fixed, and, you know, whatever it takes to maybe, you know, bill back, or, I'm, I'm sure everyone read the Public Source article, and someone, and ultimately sold their house, I think, to pay for, for that work, and I know that there are lots of folks in that area that are very worried. So, so I'm glad that you're, that you're looking into it. And then I guess my last question is, what, what if the PUC says no? What's the plan B?
The, we would certainly have to scale back, especially on the capital improvement side. We, the PUC does have an obligation to make sure we can maintain our debt service and our obligations to our bondholders, where we believe, you know, that that puts us in a position for them to accept some sort of increase, given the increased borrowing that we've had to do to advance these projects. But we would, you know, we have to take a hard look at the, the operating budget in particular, to see what else we could bear and, and probably pare back a whole lot of programs.
Okay. I think that's everything for me, thank you very much for, and I'm going to actually step out, I'll come in for, for the, the end, but I'm going to step out, but anyway, thank you very much for sitting through my questions.
Sure.
And also coming here, coming here today, so, okay, thanks.
Thank you. And because I neglected to do so earlier, I'd like to, for the record, mention that we had, we are joined by Councilwoman Bobby Wilson. But I do know that Councilwoman Gross was joining virtually, and if she is still available online, wanted to invite her to, to ask questions if she has some.
Thank you, Councilwoman Strasburger. Is everyone here, are you okay?
Yes.
I am under the weather today, I apologize. And it's great to see everybody. I really was happy to hear about the great work that you've been doing, continuing the rebuilding, I like to always say, the rebuilding of our water infrastructure for the next hundred years, right? Because we neglected it for so many decades, kind of embarking on every decade's maintenance and replacement programs that were neglected, we're doing them all at once. So we're going to have practically a brand-new water system. And also, I was really, really happy to see Mr. Barca, the, the amounts of grants and zero percent loans that PWSA has been pursuing and received, I wrote down six hundred and seventy-nine million, which is amazing, and the amounts that you've calculated that that has saved ratepayers. I know we've heard concerns about the rates increasing in my office, just like other council members have, but I'd like to also kind of put that in context, right? It was, I was looking back honestly while I was here at my computer on Zoom, through emails from the time that I served on the PWSA board back for 2017, 2018. And as a reminder to council members, it took, it took about a year, a year and a half to put that customer service, customer assistance program in place. I think it first started in 2018 or so, is what I can find from my emails, along with the winter moratorium, which I think is important to also point out, that member, that residents who cannot pay their bill during the winter months will not have their water turned off. And that is a really radical difference from a lot of cities, where people were facing, you know, they're fighting from evictions to losing custody of their children because they had no heat for their radiators when their water was turned off. And it was, it was a program that we were able to put in place, working with justice advocates in the city. So I really want to commend the board and this leadership team for working so hard to put those programs in place. Shout out to Julie Quigley, it's great to see you, and I know how hard you worked to put these programs in place. And I remember when we first put them in place, that it was, we had to rely on partner nonprofit organizations to do the door-to-door kind of outreach and get those programs advertised, and find the households that, that needed them. So kudos to PWSA for having full-time employees who are working on that, and you've built a really great program. I do have some questions that I would love for you to be able to clarify for me. And it has been some years, but one of the things that, when I joined the board in 2014, we were faced with was that there had not been any rate increases for many, many years. And Violia was in charge of the organization and had neglected infrastructure replacement. And we were asked to, to approve a thirty percent increase, in my recollection, in 2015, maybe it was 2016, when we were kind of in crisis, we were in a billing crisis, Violia Management, we were in, beginning to understand that we had lead and infrastructure problems, and it would be, it would, it was a terrible time to ask customers to pay more. And so what we did instead, have, working with a lot of advisors from other cities, and, and as a board, we increased the sewer tap-in rates, because we were dramatically lower than comparable benchmark cities. And that is not a rate that residential customers pay. That is a rate that you pay if you're taking a parking lot into two hundred luxury apartments, and you need to change, that you need to create a tap-in to our system. And I don't even think tap-in is an adequate descriptor, because you're, you're asking for a new connection to a system that is, you know, a hundred and fifty years old and collapsing. And so we, it's almost like building a new sewer to service that location, in my mind. And so that increase for the new, you know, building boom that was happening with luxury office buildings and luxury apartments across the city, generated millions of dollars. And we were able to reduce that rate increase for our households to seven percent that And it worked, I think, for a number of years to really balance out the cost of rebuilding the system with the correct customer in the correct rate structure, I think. And especially since when the And especially since when those, having represented an area of the city that saw tremendous number, you know, 3,000 or more new apartments built, 3,000 or more new luxury offices built. When every time there's new construction, it shakes those lines, there's heavy construction, you get water line breaks and sewer breaks, mostly water line breaks, they're close to the surface, all around the neighborhoods. And so it seemed an equitable cost to impose on the new construction. And it costs that they were able to to bear. I mean, it didn't slow down new construction at all. My concern here in 2023 is that in 2021, the previous mayoral administration requested that those impact fees on big developers be reduced. And so could you describe that, what was that reduction that PUC approved?
Sure, happy to do so. The I will clarify, we do have fees associated with the new development currently, per permit review fees and tap fees, but those are different and relatively less costly than the developer tap fee that you're, I believe you're referring to, Councilwoman Gross. This was a fee like many that we had under our rate structure. And we continue to hold on to that the PA Public Utility Commission looked upon poorly. We actually had one rate case where we were able to hold on to it. And then you are correct, I believe, effective 2021, through our settlement with the Public Utility Commission and intervenors, that we removed that fee. You make excellent points about the burden that new development or earlier we were talking about non residential customers like a hospital that need a high volume of water. They may not even be using the volume, but we need to be ready to serve a high volume of water at those properties. Those all have additional costs. So with Ed's help and our team of rate consultants, those costs have been rolled into our non residential rate. So that 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 difference in revenue, it was always a little unpredictable of how much we would get because, as you know, development ebbs and flows. But we made a general assumption of that revenue and then that got baked into the monthly rate so that residential ratepayers in the organization was not without that source of dollars to fund programs. This again, you know, there there were opinions about the necessity and validity of that charge. But I can assure you that that came out of our rate structure in direct negotiation with the Public Utility Commission because that was a concept and it was a fee that they weren't familiar with, with the existing investor owned utilities. It's just not a fee that they implement. But we're in this weird position, we're we're a municipal authority, yet we're regulated by the PUC. Julie and I'd also lived through that experience, so I'll let them clarify if I got any of that wrong.
Perhaps you could though estimate for us the kind of pre 2021 PUC ruling revenue from the time that the sewer tap ins were, they had, we quintupled them, we increased them five times, fivefold. When we increased them, I remember it being 2015, 2016. So that you had those high tap in, again, impact fees on large developers. From, you know, let's say, what was what was the revenue in 2019, 2020 versus after 2020, when it was rolled back?
Yep, the the tap in fee, you know, the revenue range, but, you know, on the low end, we'd seen it around $3 million per year and on the high end, up to seven or eight million per year. So, you know, obviously it was based on development in the area, but, you know, not a not an immaterial amount of money in the grand scheme.
Right, so and again, to be to have that year over year is really helpful. And again, I I remember asking maybe for maps. I think you could almost see it in a kind of, there's lags, but almost in a time series of where you have, you know, a 300 unit apartment building built that used to be a parking lot and where, because it changes the pressure in the water distribution system in that pressure district, we have pop, pop, pop water main breaks. There are a serious drag on revenue or increasing expenditures and really adding cost burdens on the Pittsburgh households. I really think you could almost show one of those moving GIS maps where you like see lots of development and then you see lots of water main breaks. Then there's lots of development over here and then there's lots of water main breaks. And we continue to struggle with that. But also note, and maybe, I don't know if you have numbers readily available, there are so many fewer water main breaks. And maybe you want to speak to that just a little bit.
Sure, happy to. And before pivoting to water main breaks, I do want to make you aware that we do, we have a relatively new, so I believe created after you left the board, Councilwoman, what we call a development services team. So if you're coming in with a new high rise development, we work with their engineers to ensure that the capacity and condition of our infrastructure can accommodate that development to avoid the situation that you alluded to. And if it can't, then it is oftentimes on the developer to add that capacity. So they, in some instances, will build a new water sewer main to accommodate that. They build it to our standards and then we accept ownership afterwards. So we're very aware of that issue and we're doing our best to address it. You make a great point there. On the water main breaks-
Huge and radical leap forward. Again, that is a huge leap forward.
We have a great team in that group. On the water main breaks, it is, we're probably tracking it better than we ever have. But you are right that we're seeing the number and the length of time it takes for us to repair dramatically go down. And in part, that is a reflection of additional resources within our field operations group, the women and men who are out there operating the valves, getting the the main replaced. But then, as I mentioned at the outset, we replaced nine miles of water main last year alone. That's not insignificant. And we were targeting those older mains that are more likely to break. And we're really trying to get to at least 1% of the water mains in our system per year. It still is going to take us 100 years to be able to get to all of it. But that is a level of investment that just wasn't there before. So we are starting to see that pay dividends on leaks. And we're also seeing it on our large diameter pipes that we have significantly invested in to make sure that those aren't leaking. So the the system has become tighter in the last few years and that's a direct result of that investment.
I'm so ecstatic to hear that. Talk to me about the different pressure districts. So where have you been concentrated, you said the older sections? And certainly I've seen a lot, and my district has seen a lot of water main replacements. So I know it's tough for people to live through. I've lived through it myself outside this window for about 18 months after, with utility coordination, which is better for all of us in the long run. But having the sequencing of water main replacements, sewer replacements and gas line replacements after that, before we had resurfacing, was a lot. It's a lot of construction. But talk, tell me about those pressure districts, the areas of of water lines that are connected, where you've been doing those replacements. Is it, can you describe what sections of the city that is?
Sure, so we we have a rating system where we look at a number of different factors. Customer complaints for low pressure is one of them. There are standards that we need to meet based on PUC standards. So we will will weight those segments of road or segments of main higher. We also do, you know, an older water main is more likely to have lead service lines present. So we take advantage of the opportunity, not just to replace the main, but also public and private lead lines that we encounter through that. So those locations score highly. And then we also look at, we use economic justice and the census tract data to focus an extra layer, especially when we're looking at lead service line replacement. You know, those are properties where the homeowners are probably less likely to take that upon themselves. So that's an additional weighting scale. So all of that gets thrown into the the model that's operated by people much smarter than me. And then we come out with a tiered system of where we're prioritizing those mains. Now, there are, you know, we have to be adaptable because there are situations sometimes where there aren't a lot of connections in an area, sorry, lead service line connections in an area, so Penn Avenue being an example, in your council district where there are no homes, but we can't have a business district repeatedly have main breaks. So sometimes those locations get to the top of the list. So there is an internal negotiation there that we certainly get feedback from customers on where to prioritize. And I'll just use this as an opportunity, info@pghtoo.com or give us a call and we will make sure, you know, it's much better for us to be aware if there are persistent issues on pressure or main breaks so that we can add that into our model.
Thank you, I'm really glad to hear that you're continuing that equity framework that we advocated for when we first started when I was on the board. If I recall, when we were under orders to start replacing lead lines, we said, we're going to prioritize where there's the most kids. I want to layer, a map layer that shows where are the kids concentrated in the city, where the low and moderate income neighborhoods are, and then also where those lead service lines cluster, right? So that we can work more efficiently and not be just trying to run around the city freezing one here, one there. And I'm really glad to hear that we're continuing that prioritization as you're replacing the water mains that have lead lines connected to them. And I know that it's a model that now the Environmental Protection Agency at the federal government is advising other legacy cities like ours to adopt.
That's absolutely right. Pittsburgh is certainly considered a leader. We're actually a member of an EPA in White House initiative that is demonstrating that these sorts of programs work. So they have been out to our locations and they agree with your assessment.
So, great, I did kind of lose contact for a little while, so I'm sure you covered some of my other questions. Have you emailed, I was like on the Zoom call and I kind of lost connection and had to jump back in. Do you, did you email us your presentations? That would be helpful. And then if I don't see some answers to my questions, I can follow up after the post agenda.
We certainly can. I don't believe we have yet, but we will.
Okay, I appreciate that. I'm sure I think that's the end of my questions. And again, I just, I know that these rate increases are really painful. I don't want to discount that we may have some work to do in making sure that our households can't afford water. But also I don't want us to overlook just how tremendously PWSA has turned around and especially under this leadership team. I have a lot of respect and I'm grateful for its being a public water utility that is a model for the country. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And I also want to thank you for your years of service on the PWSA board as well, for helping with that turnaround. I will note, just as a housekeeping item, we do have hard copies of the presentation here. We'll work with a clerk to make sure each council member gets that in their mailbox if they weren't present today and that the presentation does get emailed out as well. So I'm happy to move along to Councilman Wilson, if you have any questions.
Thank you, Chair. I'm thankful that you are here and that, sorry, I have these new mics. And that you gave a great presentation, one that I had to walk out on a little bit because I was double booked, I double booked myself today. So I apologize, but I'm back and you're excited. and so I want to make a lot of water jokes, but I won't. I don't know. But, you know, specifically to the this page here, this one that talks about the typical monthly impact and the of the consumer. Just for, before I start talking about this, what what CAP?
It's Customer Assistance Program. It's a good catch, we should spell that out.
Okay, and what's the?
So the the Customer Assistance Program in this context are customers who are at or below 150% of the federal poverty level and they're receiving our monthly bill discount program. So each month their bill is-
Yeah, they're either at or above, at or below 150.
At or below 150, correct.
And then what's the less than 50% as to poverty line as well?
We have, I don't know if we even have an official name for it, but the very, even more low incomes, so if you're below 50% of the federal poverty level, you receive an even greater discount. It's a tiered discount depending on where you fall.
And it lines up with our rate structure currently. So you get your first 1,000 gallons free for water and wastewater conveyance if you have both from us. And then you get, like Will was explaining, the volumetric discount if you're at 50% of federal poverty level.
If you're-
If you're at 50% or lower of the federal poverty level, you get a discount of 50% on your volumetric rate, so that per 1,000 gallon charge.
Gotcha. Thanks for explaining that. I, I like the acronym too. It's a it's a cap, you know, of what they can. So so this is, it's great to hear this, how long have those programs existed at the PWSA?
The bill discount program's been since 2018. We started the assistance programs in 2017. We initiated it with the winter moratorium, moved into the hardship grant and then launched the bill discount.
How do you pay for those programs?
The hardship cash assistance program is actually funded through a legal settlement that we reached to with Violia. And then the remainder comes from our general rate payer sources. So we're self funding the discount program.
All right, so-
Oh, sorry, and I will add, Councilman Wilson, we do receive some donations to, for that cash assistance program in addition to the settlement money. So I will give a shout out, our PWSA employees each year contributing more and more. We do a fundraising drive and our own employees contribute to that fund.
Oh, nice. It's great to hear. So I'm just going to try and understand this as simply as I can. So right now, there's a current rate and then there's a proposed rate for 2024, 25, 26. And then does it keep going up?
We have not proposed anything beyond 2026. So our request was a three year increase. And then, as we discussed, we'll we'll see where we land in settlement. It would be very rare for them to accept our request as presented to the PUC. So in in the past, we have settled somewhere in between our request. And then we would need to adjust to figure out-
So you think they'll they'll push you down? They'll say you gotta, so that you're going to go there and they're going to say, well, we don't agree with you. And then you get, you negotiate something lower?
That's typically, that's how it's played out in our previous rate cases and we're experiencing similar dynamics today.
And then you think you have to go this far because you want to fix everything that you're talking about?
Yeah, Ed, do you want to touch on-
You want to maintain everything, fix everything?
Sure, yeah.
Now, I don't need a whole rundown, I'm just trying to just generally understand the-
That's it, but also just the revenue stability of planning projects, executing them without the stop and go of, do we have enough revenue, do we need to raise rates? It's just that predictability is really the key with this.
Yeah, because I think that one graph shows it pretty well, where you show the investment from before.
Yeah, with the historical capital investment.
Yeah. So then how much, this is 2022. So what's what's the, is there another chart that keeps going? Since you're going to charge people more money?
We we do, we have, you know, it's going to increase. It's going to increase over time because we haven't entered into the construction phase of the water reliability plan projects.
But these bars go up?
These bars go up.
To how much?
Well, in a in a given year, as high as 300 million we've projected. Now, spending that much in one calendar year is a challenge just given the life cycle of construction projects. So our capital program totals over $1 billion. It's just a matter of can we complete all that work in that five year timeframe? And in things like supply chain, a few years ago, kind of helped, held us up. Permitting has held us up from moving on some projects. But we do expect that number, you know, to be higher, especially in the next few years as these big projects go into construction and really start spending.
So these rates that will go up, you have to, since you're part of the PUC, or you are, you know-
Regulated by-
What is that technicality?
You're regulated by the-
You're regulated by the PUC. There were public meetings about that.
Correct.
Right. You went, and I saw, I think we promoted that this is happening through some social media channels. Is it, was there a good turnout?
I believe Julie reported 33 public witnesses spoke. Others were in attendance and didn't provide official testimony. So I think compared to previous years, with the exception of the first year we had hearings, there were more attendees this time. Six total hearings, which is more than we've ever done.
So were there any, you know, what were the comments like from people that are on like a fixed income? And like that, then income isn't going up? Like, you know, I'm just curious.
I think generally people are, are concerned. And, you know, one of the reasons why Julie had her cares team there at those hearings, for those individuals that are eligible for the programs, we wanted to get them signed up if they weren't already to be able to-
Do you think the, these cap, you know, the different programs that you have, you think they meet people where they're going to, people that would be affected? You know, like, you know, imagine some of these people that are saying, hey, I want a fixed income. You know, I'm in retirement, or, you know, I want Social Security, I want some sort of, you know, some other assistance, or some other revenue that isn't going to change. You know, how many of, how many people do you think are on that sort of fixed income that are outside of these programs? That, I'm just wondering like how much that meets people?
Well, it is-
Because people that are working, you know, hopefully that their, you know, their salaries are going to increase, that people that, you know, are on a, you know, everyone's on some sort of fixed income. But that'll at least go up a certain percent, you know, each year, hopefully.
That is a demographic that we're considering, and it's one of the reasons why we have proposed to expand from 150 to 200% of the federal poverty, poverty level to maybe include some of those individuals. You know, we often do hear from seniors on fixed income like Social Security, and they're, you know, they're not seeing the increases in those at the same rate as utility costs are going up. So we, there probably is no perfect solution. We're constantly seeing what other utilities are doing to see if it's something worth stealing and trying to get through the PUC. But this expansion was our attempt this year.
Okay. How long would this process take for you to go to the PUC and then negotiate that price?
So we went to the PUC, we filed, Julie won't remember it off the top of her head.
May 9th.
Both of them, no. May 9th. It's a nine-month process. So the decision needs to be either rendered by the PUC or the settlement accepted by February 14th. So, you know, one of the, it is a painstaking, expensive, administratively burdensome process, which is one of the reasons why we wanted to make the most of it and come forward with a three-year request that they're considering now.
Okay. Well, I don't want to get into the weeds on the one topic that, that Councilperson brought up about private lines, sewer lines. Because this comes up with, the same issue comes up with, well, I believe it's the same issue comes up with zoning, where like someone buys a commercial property and like, I didn't realize that I can't print, you know, turn this into a printing factory. Or it's out of, you know, it's out of the zoning code. And then now they don't have an operating, you know, fire system, you know, fire extinguishing system, whatever. I see the same thing here, where like, the owner didn't realize that initially, or somehow there was this disconnect that they realized they bought this house and it's a private line now, or it was a private line. So people can, is that something that has to be signed off on when a, when a house is sold? You know, that there is some sort of testing done, or some overlay of a map that is done to ensure that people who are buying that property understand?
I'm not entirely sure. What I would offer is that we are a resource for prospective home buyers who may want to contact us and have us do a record search of the property to see where that's tied in. You know, in my experience in home buying, a lot of those, that due diligence is elective by the buyer. Do you hire the plumber to TV the sewer to make sure it's in decent condition? Where is that sewer located? And is it a public sewer? Things that probably could be looked into. But if it was never an issue from the previous owner, and, you know, depending on the, the different conditions of the home sale, maybe they're overlooked. So, you know, the, the timing is that a lot of these homes were built around 100 years ago, and those sewers are also showing their age. And, and that's presenting the issue that really wasn't considered up until recently. So, you know, I definitely would encourage prospective buyers to, to reach out to us to verify, you know, what sewer, if their sewer main is public, if it's not immediately obvious.
But ultimately, these private lines connect into a public line?
Yes, we do not own any sewer laterals in the system. So the small diameter pipe that runs from the property, whether it's private or residential, to the sewer main is, is not our responsibility.
Right. Right, it's just these other ones that are-
There's-
Longer. For instance, there's a, there's a house next to me. It was the first house built on the, built on the hill. And we're talking to the, to the owner, and they just, they, apparently they've been told that their, their line is like this private line that goes, like, it's totally separate. Like, they have no idea where it even taps into. So it might be like a really long run. I don't even know. I don't know. Are you finding where there's still private lines that are, that just dump into, like, they're not even tapped in?
They all should be tapped in, to our knowledge. You know, kind of septic systems or straight pipes that are not tapped in have been addressed. Hard to say, you know, until they present an issue for absolute certain, but it is a regular, regulatory requirement. If you live in the city, you have to be connected to the public sewer, our sewer.
Yeah. I just hear some of these stories, and like, wow, that's, that's like a home buyer's nightmare. Well, thanks for coming, and, you know, looking forward to February, March time, see what happens.
And we will communicate the ultimate determination. That will include the effective date, so customers are aware prior to seeing on their bill what we expect to be changes to the rate, whether it's multi-year or a single year, wherever we land in negotiations with the PUC and our intervenors. We will have bill inserts, and we certainly will promote it beyond just the, the letter and the bills to notify customers of that, what we expect to be a change next year.
All right. Thanks. I was hoping you'd bring Rachel Rampah. She's always such a good, good resource for, you know, council members, at least my office. So just want to give a shout out to Rachel again.
I appreciate that. I'll mention it to her when we're back.
Thanks.
Thank you, Councilman. Well, I'll take a moment to, to ask a couple of questions here and to make a couple of comments as well. I guess first is a, an acknowledgement that our meeting to approve the package to propose the rate case was not as robust as the meetings that we had as a board, whether it was in a board briefing, or whether it was in a, an education session, or, or executive committee, where, you know, a lot of the questions that we're asking today were, were asked in those, in those forums. And, you know, it is unfortunate the public did not get to witness that. So just sort of pontificating here that maybe we could think about, not even just three years from now, but anytime there's a major decision. I realize PWSA doesn't have a process or structure like a, like a council post-agenda hearing, but perhaps some of those questions, to the extent that the board would like to discuss that, being asked in a, in a public meeting setting that is publicized and is, you know, sort of a little bit more public, could be beneficial both to the public, but to, to board members to demonstrate that we are actually asking the question, the hard questions that people are expecting us to ask. And absent that, I'll reference a longtime-serving former board member, Jim Turner, who has the practice, always had the practice of asking the question he already knew the answer to for the sake, at the board meeting, for the sake of the public's edification. So sometimes he would even ask the question and answer it himself, so that the public knew that he had asked the question. And maybe that's a practice we can think about too, for transparency purposes. So I want to state that, because, you know, as a board member, I can say that we did, we have had some tough conversations about these proposed increases and what the necessity of them, but the squeeze on, on the average customer, average family of four or whatnot. A lot of the questions that I, that I had written down here that I wanted to ask, some of which I do already know the answer to, some of which I don't, have already been asked. So I'm grateful to, to you all for this great presentation, and to my, my council colleagues for that. Here's, here's one that I know we've talked about on the board, and if there's a, if there's a good answer, I'd like to hear it. I don't know if we really know the answer, but if either higher rates lead customers to slash their personal water use, or, you know, we are able to allow for people to consume less water, either through, you know, you know, less water that the system has to convey because of stormwater projects, or whatever the reason is, that allows for a negative feedback loop where there's less water, there's less payment for that water, and potentially, you know, potentially need, need to raise rates further or to make up for that difference or the delta. Is that something that would be significant enough to actually consider, or could potentially drive this, you know, further rate increases in the future? Do we know how much that might be?
Yeah, it's a great question. And as a native Californian, you know, conservation was drilled into my head probably in utero. So it's, it's, you definitely, and even the Public Utility Commission has emphasized that we have a responsibility to have programs to at least encourage conserving drinking water. A lot of our costs are fixed, as you allude to. You know, the, the pipe system, both on the water sewer and stormwater system is largely established. We need to maintain them as built, and they were built for a city of 700,000 people, not 300,000 people. So the cost of maintaining the existing assets doesn't go away, kind of regardless of usage. However, conserving water does benefit us on some of our pumping costs. So if we are pumping 10 million gallons less, then that's, you know, we will see that reflected on some of our utility bills. We also, you know, one of Ed's drivers in this rate increase was the, the cost of chemicals to treat drinking water. So if we are producing on average 10 million gallons per day less due to good conservation habits, those are chemicals that we don't need to introduce as part of treatment, and we save that cost. However, you know, usage, if it were to dramatically decline, then, you know, Ed and our consultants would likely have to go back and find a way for us to, to get the revenue that we need to maintain those systems that are already in existence. The, the systems that we are installing through the Water Reliability Plan are more sophisticated. I'll just quickly, a pump example, a lot of the pumps that we have kind of run on one speed, or two speeds, off or full bore, pedal to the metal. We now, what we're installing in our new pump stations is what a variable speed, so that if consumption does go down, we can alter the speed of the pumps, thus reducing energy costs. So we're, we're modernizing the system to benefit for a scenario where maybe we're producing less water. We also have a ton of storage right now that isn't necessarily all being used. We have these reservoirs. As I mentioned, not only was the population bigger, but industry obviously was here at the time, that is no longer here, water-intensive industry. So we are looking for ways to reduce costs by maybe eliminating or streamlining some of that storage. But, you know, the, the rate structure as it's built now is expecting kind of similar use demand. And we would hope through development that, you know, there are additional customers coming within the city of Pittsburgh that we can sell our water sewer and stormwater products to.
Well, yeah, exactly. I mean, if we can, if we can eliminate our vacant and abandoned lots and fill those lots with homes or apartments that house people who are then residents and are using and, you know, using and conveying water, then that's just a little bit more, you know, not only impacts the city of Pittsburgh positively, it impacts PWSA and helps to fill those gaps as well, for everyone else paying a little bit less.
One of the things I'll say too, is we are addressing leaks in our system. So, you know, as those leaks are addressed, the cost to produce water will come down. So those will cost we then won't have to expend. So, you know, if we have cutbacks in, you know, in consumption from a customer perspective, we'll be saving costs on those leaks to maybe help balance that out. I'm not sure it's going to be a one-to-one ratio, but, you know, it is something over time, over the next 15, 20 years, that, you know, those non-revenue water costs, as we call them, will continue to come down.
Okay, that's helpful. We haven't talked a lot about stormwater fees, a little bit here, but, but just to, you know, as someone who cares about the stormwater aspect of this, a note that the stormwater fees are directly impacting our ability as, or PWSA's ability to, to, one, address basement backups, and two, I think even more broadly and importantly in some cases, the sewage overflow issue that we experience in the city and meet a consent decree. For the public's benefit, for our benefit, are the, how are the stormwater fees assessed as you approach each rate, each rate case? And how do you assess whether, you know, they need to be shifted either, you know, more towards the, say, you know, larger parking lot owners and less to the residential customer? Or, you know, how will you continue to monitor and assess what those fees should be based on, both the need, but also kind of equity issues?
That's a great question. And this will be our, our second rate case with us having a stormwater fee in place. As Ed mentioned a little while ago, the, the proposal is based on what we call a cost of service analysis, so water sewer and stormwater. What does it really cost PWSA to be able to provide our customers for that given service? On the stormwater side, we have been able, we settled with the Public Utility Commission and believed it was more appropriate to not go to full cost of service within that fee. So it's, I think incrementalism is the rate-making term, where we're, we're trying to recuperate a portion of that stormwater cost through our fee. Our proposal for this year, the three-year proposal, is increasing the stormwater fee. The fees are eligible for the discount program, I will add, so that, you know, residential property owners do get a discount if they're income-qualified. But the, the framework for us assessing the fee is, you know, one that I believe is really equitable, and it's a shame that some are challenging it. It is based on the impervious area on that property, whether it's residential or commercial. Commercial properties have more variables, and they're of large size, so you don't want to lump them all into a one particular fee. What we do is we look at GIS data to determine how much impervious or hard surface that it would be generating stormwater for us to treat is coming off of that property. And then per one, about 1,000 square feet?
1,650.
There she is, she's on it. That is, that is considered an ERU, equivalent residential unit. And so per 1,000 or so square feet, they're, they're charged that fee incrementally. So a surface parking lot may actually pay more in a stormwater fee than, you know, the, the building downtown, a high-rise downtown that really doesn't have all that much impervious surface other than its rooftop. And, and that is supposed to be proportional, and it is proportional, to the stormwater generated from that property. So each property on the non-residential side is assessed specifically. Residential is, is a tiered basis. So you're, you're bucketed whether you're a typical size property, or you're slightly smaller, or you're larger. So it really is something that a customer can at the margins control, whether it's reducing some of the hard surfaces on their property, maybe getting rid of pavement on a circular driveway, if you have the ability to do that, to reduce that fee, and then reduce, you know, the, the burden that you're placing on your neighbors and in our system from the stormwater coming off of that property. And I will just add, the fee revenue, you know, as I mentioned, we're not getting all of the dollars we need under that fee necessarily, but those dollars are used to do some really retail things that you see every day, replacing storm drains or catch basins, as we call them, maintaining them. So we use those dollars as operating to make sure that, you know, street flooding and sort of those nuisance issues. And some of us, you know, we still live on streets with those older-style catch basins that we're trying to replace. That's where those dollars are going, in addition to some of the signature green infrastructure projects that get a lot of attention as well.
So I'm aware that there's a court case in Pennsylvania Supreme Court, and to the extent that you're able to, what, you know, what is the plan if the Pennsylvania Supreme- what, you know, what is the plan, um, if the Pennsylvania Supreme Court strikes down or limits the right of municipal authorities to collect a stormwater fee?
Sure. So we are monitoring the case, um, you know, on a fact basis, we think that the, it's called West Chester because it's the, the college, West, West Chester, that is owned by the state is suing the municipality, saying this is a fee, not a tax. The dynamics at play in this particular case, we believe are a lot different than, than PWUSA's stormwater system. So the, the harmed, uh, party in the college is saying that the, you, the municipality isn't actually providing them stormwater services. It is different because it's a municipality being sued and not a municipal authority. The municipal authorities under the Pennsylvania Municipal Authorities Act have specific, uh, authorization to charge stormwater fees. Also in our case, not only are we a municipal authority, we're regulated by the Pennsylvania Public Utility Commission that has approved our tariff and allowed us to charge stormwater fees based on impervious area, which is the issue at place here. So those are just two, two examples. It's a municipality. Um, we have the Municipal Authorities Act, uh, as an authority and that we are PUC regulated, which we are one of two really city things regulated by the PUC. We're very unique. But it is, you know, something that we're continuing to track. We filed a friend of the court amicus brief to this case to spell out to the Pennsylvania Supreme Court, how we are different. And this is a, a national best practice to charge for stormwater fee based on impervious area. And it's been, um, you know, well, well-established and it, we do believe it's an equitable way to do it. If this were not in place, arguably, we would have to do what we did before, which was roll it into our sewer rates, which isn't a reflection of, of where that burden is coming from on these properties. So we're, we're concerned. But we think we would have a strong case to make that, that our instance here in, in Pittsburgh at PWUSA is different than the ones that are being debated at this room court.
If I can add, our customers hopefully understand that we're trying to reduce basement backups, stop overland flooding and stop pollution to rivers, creeks and streams. That work still needs to be done regardless of, you know, what, what measure we're using to collect the dollars to do so.
Mm-hmm, absolutely. I, um, wanted to touch briefly on the meter issue because this is, this is an issue that, um, has come up with a couple of different constituents, uh, that I represent. And there's educational materials and information on the website or you can call PWUSA. But if we could touch on it briefly, because it is such, it's actually such an important piece of the rate structure that, um, and I'm not going to do it justice, but essentially even if you are able to far, far, far like reduce your, um, your usage of water far below what is expected for, say, a larger house that you might have. If your meter is too large for the house, maybe it's an old house and you bought it along, you know, it was built a long time ago, but you just bought it. And you, you don't realize it's kind of too big. It's almost like a commercial sized meter. There's a, there's a minimum that you're going to pay that far exceeds what you probably should be paying. And we talk about, you know, typical residential customer, five eighths inch meter. Can you just, can someone briefly explain that and what the process might be to find out if your meter is the right size? If you need to downgrade, what the process might be? Because we've had some, we've had some, some customers, some constituents who have successfully downgraded and then they pay just automatic base rate without even calculating usage is far lower than what they were paying previously.
Sure. Part of this rate proposal is actually in year two to change the rate structure, to remove that piece from the minimum being, um, anything tied to volumetric charges. So essentially looking at just a customer service charge per bill and then billing all the usage based on how much the customer actually consumes. Um, we have a meter improvement program going on now where we are attempting to replace all aged meters in the system. And we're really making a lot of progress and we have a goal in mind. And what that does is it allows us to replace the meter in your house at no cost to you and gives you a meter that reads down to the tenth of a gallon. That also parlay is into our customer usage portal where you can view and pay your bills, start and stop service and view your usage and have leak alerts come to you. Currently via email and we're working on text message as well. So all of those things are tied into getting that meter upgraded. So allowing us into the home is the first step of getting all those services. And then looking forward to meeting the needs of those customers who bought the larger property, um, when it may have housed multifamilies or, um, you know, just had a configuration where there was a higher volume of water necessary at that time. And now it's a smaller number of people who are residing there and they want that same flow, but they don't want to use as much water per month. And those, um, will, if we're approved by the commission to do so, those will be remediated, um, in 2025. And prior to that, we have a downsizing program. So if you reach out to customer service or you go to our website and just search on downsizing, then that meter form pops up. It's a web form. Complete that, that goes through our process internally to be vetted. And once that's approved, um, all you have to do is, uh, hire a plumber to prepare the setting for the different sized meter. And then we'll come and put the meter in place.
Mm-hmm, thank you.
And I think you can see the size of your meter connection on your bill.
Absolutely, yes.
Good point.
Open your bills, people. There's lots of good stuff in there.
And go on and make sure that PWUSA has your phone number. So if you need to get an auto call, um, that you're getting the call for a shut off notice or whatnot. Yeah, that happens a lot in our district too. So, um, I, I don't have any further questions. I do want to say that my, one of my takeaways is that as Councilwoman Warwick, um, illustrated, you know, the average customer, the average family is getting squeezed everywhere with inflation, with the cost of utilities, with the cost of groceries, gas, whatever it might be. It is, um, incredibly difficult to be, um, a customer, you know, a, a customer of any kind of, of service, uh, these days. And, and PWUSA is making changes and upgrades that are 50 years overdue in a lot of cases with, you know, um, a period of time where there were no rate increases. So the can was kicked down the road to now. And now is faced with, you know, some hard decisions. And, um, as, you know, this rate increase, um, and this rate case moves forward and future rate cases are proposed, there are going to be additional costs that PWUSA has to bear, um, that are passed down to, to rate payers as well. My takeaway is that it's one of many examples where cities and city authority, municipal authorities are left holding the bags when we don't have the state and federal support that we need. I am so grateful for Penn Vest. I am incredibly grateful for the EPA grants that we get. And municipal water systems need more and on into the future. I don't know what we would have done to continue to replace these lead lines on time if we hadn't received, if ARPA hadn't been in existence. Um, so we need ARPA plus, you know, 20 for, uh, well into the future to be able to continue to upgrade if we really are as a country going to prioritize things like, you know, clean water for every resident of the country and electricity and, and internet and all of that. Like the federal government does need to step up even more and help us so that it's not left to cities, but more importantly, customers to bear the brunt of that. So that would be my call. I, I'm one council member and I don't, know we don't have a lot of support. I hear the CEO of PWUSA has a, has a direct line to the White House. So maybe you can help with that, but.
They might block my number, but.
But, um, but, you know, I, that is my takeaway. You know, it's true that, that customers are, um, you know, are feeling the pinch. And I'm grateful for the customer assistance programs we have in place and that, um, my hope is that we can continue to expand it with, you know, the same, but also increased creative solutions for, for finding those ways to deal with, say, the renter and the, and the, the property owner, for instance. But with that, I will, I will make a call to see if there are any additional questions that weren't asked or final comments. Uh, Councilwoman Warwick.
Yeah, I did just, just quickly, I, I mean, I know I said it before, but I really would encourage you to do an examination. I mean, I understand about bulk rates. I understand about like wholesale and you get, you know what I mean? You get more because you're buying more. So you get it for a cheaper rate. I get that in the, you know, in the private sector. But, you know, you guys hold all the chips, right? You, you don't need to do that. You don't need to give UPMC, like UPMC can pay as much per gallon as a resident, right? Pitt can pay as much per gallon as a resident because there is no alternative, right? And so putting the squeeze on the residents and that, and that, that's who's going to feel this, right? And I, and I know that the rates will go up for them too, but I, I would really encourage you to explore just simply charging them the same per gallon rate. I mean, just run the numbers, right? Just out of curiosity, like just, just for the sake of curiosity, run the numbers. See how much PWUSA would make if, you know, go through your various, you know, you know, I, I assume it's by building, right? I assume that, you know, as customers go, it's by building or whatever it is. And see what you would get, you know, look at how much water they're using and how much PWUSA could, how much revenue you could pull in by just charging them the same that you are charging residents, right? And, 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 and not even just to, to sort of go after our local non-prov, you know, like, you know, do PNC bank, do every office building downtown, you know, just run the numbers, just do a few samples, cause it might be a lot of money. And that might be a lot of lead line replacement and that might be a lot, you know, I'm, so maybe round two of this or maybe plan B. I asked what your plan B was. Maybe that's your plan B. I would encourage it, you know, just get an intern on it and see what you can come back with.
I, I, we can certainly, and we will certainly go back and take a look at that. I, I would just add, um, you know, these proposals have to meet PUC requirements in their rate making methodologies. So the, you know, we've pushed the envelope, especially on the assistance programs of kind of how creative we can be in self-funding assistance programs and things of the like. Um, so, you know, those are the kinds of things, working with our rate consultant is, you know, that inform the different rate classes and the cost of service and those arguments that we make through a rate case. So there is that, while it may seem like we hold all the power to determine who pays what, it, it ultimately has to meet at least settlement terms approved by the commission, which is something that we consider before we put forward a rate case. But you make a good point.
Yeah, well, I mean, you can always ask, right? Run the numbers, see what they show. If it shows that you could pull in a lot of revenue by charging the same to these large, large users, right? You know, and, and I don't want to worry, you know, let's, whatever, just large enterprises with a thousand employees or more, whatever, just whatever the, see what the worst they can say is no. Be good PR for you guys.
Great. Any further questions? Final comments?
Yeah, I forgot to bring up this, uh, in my, uh, questioning, um, in comments earlier, which is controlling, uh, I realize that controlling stormwater, you know, is like our responsibility on the street. And then once it gets into, um, you know, the sewers, you know, the catch basins and everything, then that becomes your responsibility, right? And then we also have interesting scenarios that some of those catch basins are owned by DPW or the city. And they just daylight over the hill. So, um, I can do this outside the meeting and I think I've attempted to, um, put together something already. I know I have, um, capital requests in for the past few years to do a study to understand what's happening. But I think there should be a real evaluation of River View Park in terms of, um, once that water hits the street and it goes into a sewer. You know, where is that water going? And then also, um, though, just to, you know, check all the water lines. I understand you have this new fancy device that can check all the water lines to make sure, without digging them up to see if they're leaking, right?
We, we have several technologies we use. Yeah, it's kind of depending on.
Yeah.
Location.
Because in the light of, of this, uh, deer legislation where people are saying the word landslide with deer. I also want to keep the word landslide with water since the red beds are underneath and if they're saturated, then that, you know, they expand. And then that moves the whole, um, hillside away and then that landslide occurs. So just wanted to reiterate something that I've been bringing up for some time and trying to get, trying to get a commitment on somewhere.
No, happy to, to talk offline with you. We've done a, a number of, you know, we've done some design work and hoping to enter into construction on a stormwater project in, in River View Park itself.
We've talked about that one where we're, we've been talking about for a while.
Yes.
Yeah.
Uh, and we've done some hill remediation work as well. Um, and then we also have an effort underway to identify those catch basins that you referred to in the larger, the parks larger than 50 acres. So, yeah, happy to.
You see my point. I mean, it's like, we paved a few roads and I just think the, you know, it was just eye open to me. It wasn't River View Park, it was somewhere else. And, you know, it came back and they were like, there was some, something wrong with the sewer. And they were like, well, this is, this is the city sewer and it just, the water is just dumps over the hillside. And they were installed in several different places all over, right? So, all right, just, uh, you know, either we pull them in, tap them into the system. I don't know what the solution is or how we can do that. But all I know is that it's wet out there and, you know, it's moving. So thanks.
Sure.
Any further comments from members? Any final closing remarks from PWUSA representatives?
Want to thank you for the opportunity to provide this update and hopefully there's a little more information about the nature of our rate case. But as I mentioned, we'll be back in touch with customers and obviously council offices when we come to that final determination on what next year's rates will look like.
Wonderful. Um, thank you for being here, for your remarks, for your information. I feel like I need an Ed Barca and Julie Meckling to follow me around everywhere to like, help me understand what's, you know, or like, help me remember numbers and exact dates. I wanted to say also that, you know, um, I want to give credit to, um, Councilmember Warwick for, um, for, for help, you know, asking for this, this, and partnering with me on this in some ways because, um, I know that she has been laser focused on making sure families can, can afford to live in Pittsburgh and the livability of Pittsburgh. And that it's not just PWUSA that we're looking at here, you know, potentially, I don't want to speak out a term, but potentially we, we call another post agenda and have Duquesne Light come in and talk about their assistance programs and People's Gas and their assistance programs and how it all adds up to, you know, uh, potential increases and what we can do about that collectively, not just targeting, um, PWUSA. So, um, you know, maybe stay tuned for further action there. But I really appreciate the conversation today. I've, I've learned, you know, even more than, you know, I thought I knew everything and I learned even more. Appreciate the comments from my council colleagues and the attendants and, um, we'll make sure to get this information out to all members. So, uh, with no further business, I will move to adjourn this post agenda.